Seven o'clock, call the meeting to order. I'm Grace Lesbrunz, Cascade Supervisor, Clerk Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Nordhook.
Here.
Trustee McDonald.
Here.
Supervisor Lesbrunz.
Here.
Treasurer Corstange.
Here.
Trustee Kessel.
Here.
Trustee Shipley.
Present.
And Clerk Slater, present.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Article three, before we approve tonight's agenda, there's an amendment because the Library Milage passed to add amending the milage tax rate. Formal request. I propose that we just stick that at the second item of new business, so item eighty-three point five, twenty twenty-four. With that, is there a motion to amend or to approve the amended agenda?
Shipley makes motion to approve the amended agenda to include the milage request.
Support. It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by treasurer Corstange, to approve the agenda as amended, all in favor.
All right.
Opposed, motion carried. Having no presentations tonight. Now is the time for public comments, welcome to comment on anything on tonight's agenda. Consumers Energy, the manager evaluation policy honoring trustees Kessel and McDonald for their service. Also, the adoption of the amended ordinance for solar and wind, excuse me, solar and battery storage. With that, welcome. Is there anyone virtually? Article six, approval of the consent agenda, motion or discussion?
Motion to approve.
Shipley supports.
It's a motion by trustee Kessel, supported by trustee Shipley, to approve the consent agenda, all in favor.
All right.
Opposed, motion carried. Article seven, financial actions, specifically invoices scheduled to be paid tomorrow on November seventh. There a discussion or a motion?
Make a motion to approve the financial actions, including the invoices to be paid on eleven, seven, twenty-four.
Shipley supports.
It's a motion by treasurer Corstange, supported by trustee Shipley, all in favor.
All right.
Opposed, motion carried. Article nine, first item of new business, zero eight three, twenty twenty-four, consider resolution to amend the zoning ordinance for A, regulating utility scale battery energy storage systems, and B, solar energy systems. The second reading, manager Smith.
I don't have too much to add, other than this is the second reading, we did the introduction of the last board meeting, but the lengthy discussion in regards to this Public Act two thirty-three that went into law in November. Planning Director Hendricks is here to answer any questions if there are further questions.
I make a motion to adopt the ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance to regulate as has been presented by our legal counsel and as manager Smith just referred to.
Support.
The motion by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Nordhook, to approve the resolution amending the zoning ordinance as stated, both A and B. Clerk Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Shipley.
Yes.
Trustee Kessel.
Yes.
Trustee Nordhook.
Yes.
Treasurer Corstange.
Yes.
Treasurer McDonald.
Yes.
Clerk Slater, yes, and supervisor Lesbrunz.
Yes, motion carried. Item zero eight three point five, twenty twenty-four, this is the one we just added. Amended milage tax rate request, manager Smith.
Sure. So on August twenty-eighth, when the budget was approved, you also approved the L forty twenty-nine for the tax milage rates. It was premature to include the Library Milage on that. As of last night with the election, the Library Milage did pass. So this is an amended L forty twenty-nine that we can get to the county to actually have accurate milage rates on our tax rolls.
I move to approve the levy of the twenty twenty-four milage rates, taking the new amendment into consideration.
Shipley approves.
It's a motion by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Shipley, to approve the amended milage tax rate request as stated, all in favor.
All right.
Opposed, motion carried. Item zero eight four, twenty twenty-four, introduction of consumer energy franchise ordinance. Manager Smith.
Yes, this is pretty standard for communities to adopt a franchise ordinance for the utility companies. This one specifically is for Consumers Energy. Cascade Township actually has four of these ordinances or agreements with consumers. They, one expired in August of twenty twenty-four, which is what sparked us to work with them and our attorney's office on combining all four ordinances into one. They had various expiration dates as the township grew, that's when they got put into place. So the one that expired this year was in August, there's one that expired in two thousand thirty-two, one in two thousand thirty-nine, and one in two thousand forty. So this here is consolidating all those, it's very standard language, the attorney's office did approve it for its content. And this is the introduction, so the second reading will be at the next meeting.
Discussion or motion?
Since this kind of wraps up and consolidates a lot of the ordinances that we've already had with not only Consumers Power, but also cable TV, telephone company, fiber optics, it only makes sense. So I support, I make a motion to consider the introduction and support to the ordinance.
For the next reading, or the approval be at the next meeting?
It will, yes.
It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee Nordhook, to approve the introduction of the Consumers Energy franchise ordinance consolidated. Clerk Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Treasurer Corstange.
Yes.
Trustee Nordhook.
Yes.
Trustee Kessel.
Yes.
Trustee Shipley.
Yes.
Clerk Slater, yes. Supervisor Lesbrunz.
Yes, motion carried. Item zero eight five, twenty twenty-four, resolution to approve annual exemption option from Public Act one fifty-two. Manager Smith, or?
I can start, and then we can throw it to Katie. This is something that communities should be doing on an annual basis if they wanted to opt out of P Act or Public Act one fifty-two, which has to do with healthcare caps or becoming exempt, this is all part of the Affordable Care Act. So this is the annual resolution, we should have had this with the budget, it was a slight oversight. So Cascade Township has historically always exempted themselves and not gone with the eighty-twenty hard cap or the eighty-twenty. So this resolution should be coming back for the board on an annual basis, so we're requesting that now as our healthcare plans for our employees are outside the realm of the eighty-twenty.
This is the first time we've done the resolution, correct?
I believe so, yeah, and this goes back to two thousand and eleven when the act was implemented.
Language meets all requirements.
Say that one more time?
The language meets all the requirements.
Oh, yes, yep, this resolution is pretty standard. I think every community out there that exempts themselves, which most of them do, use the same resolution.
I remember looking at this before, and we had comparison of our township to the other municipalities, and we fall right in line with that.
Then I move to approve the resolution to exempt Cascade Township from the requirements of P A one fifty-two.
Shipley supports.
It's a motion by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Shipley, to approve the resolution regarding the annual exemption option from Public Act one five-two. Clerk Slater, please call the roll.
Treasurer Corstange.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Kessel.
Yes.
Trustee Nordhook.
Yes.
Trustee Shipley.
Yes.
Clerk Slater, yes. Treasurer Lesbrunz.
Yes, motion carried. Item zero eight six, twenty twenty-four, adoption of Township Manager Evaluation Policy. The Chair of the Personal Finance Committee, Treasurer Corstange, will give the board a preview of this one.
Yeah, so at the last board meeting, we completed the Township Manager Evaluation during the process of getting input and going through the process, the Personnel and Finance Committee. I have a microphone and I am using it, I'm sorry if you can't. So, starting over, at the last board meeting, we did complete the person, or the Township Manager Evaluation. And during the process, the Personnel and Finance Committee did notice that the previous policy was greater than ten years old, so that has been updated to reflect the process we did this year. Everybody on the board had input, we all had a good discussion about the evaluation with Jade in the room, and this policy reflects the process that we went through this year.
This policy makes it, just kind of set as standard that the entire board would review the manager, which should be the case, not just the Personal Finance Committee, which was.
Correct, we, everybody on the board filled out an evaluation, and all of those evaluations were compiled into one summary, and all of the evaluations had the same input and the same weight on how his evaluation went.
Go ahead, Jen.
Well, go ahead, Tom.
Well, I just wanted to, see, I think it's a good idea, I think it's great, Wendy, that you put this together and that it's documented, and we make it into long-term policy. And I think it's, I, there were just a few vague areas, and I want to make some suggestions to approve it, but with some additions, and they're simple things, I just want to quick review them. Number, there's a, there's a number of them, established evaluation criteria, I think that's fine, number one, number two, evaluation preparation, that's fine, if you look at number three, the individual evaluations, that's, that's fine, this all makes good sense. Number four, the Personnel Finance Committee review, I think that's really good, I just thought it would be nice to have one additional bullet in there. It says that there, to summarize the findings, so the committee summarizes the findings, but sometimes, like in this year, we didn't get the summary until we were actually there with the review. So I think it might be nice to say, a compilation of the reviews shall be provided to the board members at least one week prior to the board review session with the Township Manager, just so we can see them ahead of time, rather than the first time we see them is at the meeting with the Township Manager.
The compilation?
Yeah.
Seeing the other people's also?
The compilation, yeah, yeah, because I think it's, it's nice to have it ahead of time, that was just one thing that I felt would be useful to add. And then, um.
To have them at all, it's nice.
And I, and I've got these documented, but, yeah, I'll just talk about them and see if, what the feedback is. And then, on the last bullet, where it says, the Personal Finance Committee will compile two to five possible goals for the following year, I thought it'd be nice to say, the committee will compile two to five possible goals for the following year after receiving input from all board members as to what should be goals for the Township Manager.
I think that's given, though, as part of the process.
Yeah, this just clarifies it, so everybody has a chance to make sure that, you know, because I might be on a committee and John might not be, and John might have some goals that he wants to put in ahead of time, I just thought it was nice to have it documented in the policy.
Yeah, I think that speaks for itself, but if you want to add it, that's fine.
And then, under number five, there's the presentation of the summary. And it's, and this is very good, presentation of the summary, the Personnel Finance Committee presents their findings and recommends, recommendations to the full board, I think it would be nice to add, present their findings and recommendations to the board at least three days prior to the session with the Township Manager. This may be done at a board meeting or in a closed session in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. It's just nice to have those, the findings and the recommendations ahead of the actual meeting with the Township Manager, because we might want to discuss things.
So you want one of them a week ahead, you want one of them three days ahead?
Yeah, just.
I mean, in the, in the thought of a process, they should be the same then.
Okay.
I mean, if we're gonna.
I like that, yeah.
If we're gonna do something and send it out as an email to everybody, it should be, oh, if we're gonna do this a week ahead, where the compilation comes out, which the presentation summary is pretty much the same thing as the, what we just talked about before, the compilation, so.
Yep, I would agree.
Just them being a week, I don't think, though, that. Okay, I, all right.
No, I just thought it'd be nice for, for the finding and the recommendations, for the full board to get those recommendations a week ahead of time, so we could see them ahead of time, rather than.
Which is fine, but that goes up to under number four, more so than number five, because number five is talking about the full board review and feedback session, where we are all sitting down in a room with Jade and going over the review. So I think the summary is really what we discussed under bullet point number four, which we.
I agree, but I was only adding that, Wendy, because the presentation of summary is under number five right now, and if you wanted to move the whole thing to number four, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Well, I think.
Really splitting there.
It is, because these are two separate things, the full Board of Trustee Review and Feedback Session is when we, as a board, are sitting down with Jade and going over his review. So we just talked about the summary of the reviews, then, will be giving out to all board members ahead of time, a week ahead.
Okay.
But the full Board of Trustee Review and Feedback Session, bullet number five we are discussing right now, is about sitting in a room with Jade. That, that doesn't have to do anything with three days ahead of time, that's us sitting down as a board, talking to Jade about his review and reviewing the findings.
I think you're right, that, that, that should be moved up to number four. That, that, that's where number four comes into play, we see it ahead of time.
Back to the Personnel Finance Committee review and what they did with, do, under summarize the findings. Again, number five is a completely separate bullet point and a separate piece of the process.
These are two separate meetings, this is the close second we had, so that's why.
Gotcha, okay, so forget that one, that we've covered at number four. And then, the only other thing that I thought would be useful to clarify is that, and then number, it should be number six, it goes to number seven, it kind of skipped number six, so.
That was because we combined a whole, I didn't do the editing process, I gave.
Yeah, I'm just.
Somebody else?
Right, it's listed as number seven, but there isn't a number six, so.
Right, seven is six.
Yeah, seven is six. Under performance related compensation, just to be clear, that I thought it'd be nice to, to have any salary change or bonus for the Township Manager can only be made with approval by a majority vote of the Township Board, which is usually a given, but it would just be nice to have it clarified. And then compensation should be agreed upon by the board without the manager present, and then communicated to the manager of the board, just so we can discuss it ahead of time, what we think.
But that's under, that, that goes back up to number five, so vote on recommendations, that's where the board votes on committees' recommendations regarding the score and any proposed salary adjustments. Salary adjustments due to the evaluation process will go into fact, blah, 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 but that's when, it, it talks about that under number five, when we are meeting as a board, and again, that is a section where we did talk about having it be the board's discretion, whether when we vote, having the manager in the room or not in the room, but that is part of the summary process, when we are sitting down as a board, going over the review in either closed or open session, that's when that happens, so that is addressed under number five, that it has to be voted on as a board. And then, the compensation, it, under that, it's just bullet points about how it happens and timing.
So number five implies that there is a full vote of the board before any bonus or salary.
It states, vote on recommendation.
It doesn't.
It doesn't, yeah, it doesn't imply, it states, part of the full Board of Trustee Review and Feedback Session includes a vote on recommendation, the board vote, the board votes on committee's recommendation regarding the poor performance score and any proposed salary adjustments. So it, it states it very clearly that this board.
Top here.
Right, I see it, yeah. And that includes, obviously, bonuses along with salary.
Compensation.
Compensation.
Any proposed salary adjustments.
Got it.
The only thing that I think that might still need to be added to this is timing. We talked about that when we were in closed session, the timing of Jade's review, the timing of when his contract stated he was up for a review. The only thing that I think might need to be added to this as well is that this will happen maybe the first board meeting of October, because that's when we did it this year, you know, something to that effect, or happened in the fall, something with timing, because there is nothing in here that gives the timing of this, which I think it needs to be done.
I think it's, I think it's too strict. I, the trustees turn their evaluations at different times, I got them like a couple days before, like, and then to say a week before you want to view the other trustees, which is kind of optional to begin with, like, I, I don't think it's necessary, or to pigeonhole a board, a future board on something so specific and unnecessary as one week before to, to review the, all the other trustees review, like, that's not.
I think if you're gonna be.
I don't think.
Transparent to the board, you give them compilation, so everybody has a chance to look at it ahead of time, rather than when we walk in the meeting.
A week before, I, when I started, I didn't find out the manager, I found out the manager's review had happened without me knowing about it, and the same person, trustee Kessel, had signed both signatures, one mine and one someone else. So this is so, this is to be transparent and fair and consistent, that is such a, there's nothing not transparent about it. It's completely unnecessary, and I think it's a little weird to say, I want to see the entire boards, every trustee's evaluation, that's like an optional part of the, that's on a whole week in advance.
I think, I think what I'm asking.
Get the trustee reviews a week in advance, like, everyone turned them in at different times, so.
I just think it's useful for the board members to see the compilation ahead of time.
I think it's, it's maybe, and if people, if boards want to do it, awesome, it's a good idea, but to include it in a policy as a requirement is overkill, in my opinion.
I just thought it would be fair for all the members to see ahead of time.
But this is a very thorough and policy, and the whole point is it to bring, the whole point is to bring consistency and to engage the entire board, whereas when I started, it was just three of the seven trustees on the Personal Finance Committee, which is why this policy is necessary, because we may not be here in the future, but it's, it's more important that we have a consistent policy, so that's the whole point, so to.
I agree.
I don't think that that a week in advance, especially when you can't guarantee when people are gonna turn in their reviews, that you're gonna get a chance to see the entire trust, that means, I know, that means someone hasn't wait, someone hasn't done it yet, hold on, I'll get everyone else's, and then I'll just cherry pick, and that totally, like.
No, that is the point, the point is to give the board members some visibility to a compilation and the findings.
The board members need to, the board members need to do their job, and you don't need a week in advance to look at everybody else's reviews. This is, that's, this is, this is a really, no, it's, it's the reviews of the manager, you don't need to have everybody's reviews a whole week in advance, that's way too specific, and this is so much more transparent and very specific.
I think what Tom is saying is, he just wants to see it prior, it doesn't have to be.
Yeah, he said he wants.
Ahead, what Wendy's saying is that it needs to have some regularity in terms of, in the fall, when we do all the other employee evaluations, or just needs to be a season to do evaluations.
That's fine, yeah.
Right.
But it also.
I would agree, Wendy's.
Annual, and then you do it the following year.
Yeah.
Especially with compensation adjustments occurring at the same time.
Right.
The problem, I think, that Tom is raising is if Tom were to come up with a goal for Jade, I don't know what Tom's goal is, I don't know what he came up with, and if we get a compilation, we see three or four goals, and, and if we don't see it till we give it to Jade, Tom thinks, well, what about my goal? You know, so if you have a chance to get those ahead of time and review them.
That's what. Well, and I think that the policy states that the Personnel and Finance Committee is gonna come up with the goals, and I think that as part of that process, that anybody that has had an evaluation knows, it's important to include the employee in the goal-setting process. You can't set goals for an employee without an employee being a part of that process, and that is the process that the Personnel and Finance Committee will be doing with the manager, is to be able to set the goals for the following year.
And then you get together and talk about it.
And all of the trustees will be able to rate the previous year's goals and how they felt the manager did with those goals, and whether they achieved those goals or not, but, but I think that's part of having subcommittees, is trusting them.
This is a, this is really so much improved, I don't, you don't need to, to view the entire board's comments and, and, and goals the week before, that's.
But I guess I'm asking, what does it hurt, to give everybody's visibility?
Because they're neat, they're, it's completely proper to have some flexibility and not completely pigeonhole Board of Trustees, this isn't just for you, for us, it's for future boards.
Exactly, that's, that's my point.
So this is such a splitting hair, it, it depends, it's totally optional, it doesn't make, it's a, it's a more of a preference, that's what it is, it's more of a preference, and you don't need to pigeonhole, the more specific you get it, the more you're pigeonholing future boards with something that's just like one trustee who's not even on the board anymore, preference, it's, it doesn't, it's just unnecessary, and that's important, if it's a policy that you don't make it so specific that it's got stuff that's unnecessary, if it's a policy, if it's an ordinance, go extra specific, but if it's a policy that's just there to make, you know, to give some guidance, then you don't want to go real specific on things that the Board of Trustees should actually get to decide themselves, maybe I don't want to show you guys my, I mean, I don't care, but you don't want to pigeonhole people with such specifics in a policy, it's too, it's too much.
Very correct, and I think even.
It's not smart.
It's, this policy is very specific.
It already is very specific.
In generally, policy gives guidelines.
Mm-hmm, it's, yes, because then it guidelines for, to, you know, stay in your lane, Board of Trustees, but you still get to choose which lane you're in, we're not gonna micromanage, you know, twenty years from now, and that would be an example of micromanaging, and it's just not for us.
I was just trying to make. Two points, one is to give the, all the board members some visibility ahead of time as to what, and participation in some potential or possible goals, and then to have that ahead of time to know, to talk about the potential salary or bonuses, so we're in agreement, so we're not putting the Township Manager on the spot.
When I, I saw the managers, yeah, no, that's great, but it doesn't have to be in the, that's great, and that's something that we would do, that's.
It's in the, it's in the policy.
There's nothing wrong with.
It's.
Nothing wrong with the idea of doing it, Tom, it's just that to be so specific in the policy to pigeonhole future boards, it's unnecessary, especially because there should be some flexibility.
The policy specifically discussed the full Board of Trustee Review and Feedback Session, the discussion piece, I mean.
And this is light years ahead of what we had, when I started, where it was just three people, well, it was really two people.
I feel, I think it's better to have discussion as a board versus you having all the information, you having, you have, like, we all have the information, then what, we all meet privately to have.
You can't.
Any discussions?
We have to act as a body.
This promotes us to be one board, to be collaborative in our discussion. If you were amazed that somebody gave Jade a really good or a really bad score, it gives, it allows for that discussion, for us to talk about that, and any concerns or any, you know, pieces of that as a group, which is how it should be, and, and I think it's very specific for a policy, but yet.
Yeah, and that's more time than what people, what trustees get for the agenda, the packet, the week before, I mean, before a meeting, like, it's not a bad idea, it's a good idea, but it should be the board's choice.
Chip Johnson's come.
Hi, way down here. This appears to be one of those things that deserves more thought put into it, no?
I mean, I, I.
My feelings, I'm gonna be honest, my feeling of this is, as a board, we just went through this process, this policy was to mimic the process that we all went through, that we heard no negative feedback, that we all thought went great, to mimic this, to set things up for our future board and our board that's coming in very soon, so that we would have one policy in place for them, so they know what they need to do and what the expectation is next year. I think it's very difficult, because as a newer board member, there are not a lot of good policies in this township to outline what we need to be doing. So I think the idea was, this would come in front of this board, because we just did this, we could approve this or discuss it to set it up for the next board, so that they know and understand.
A roadmap, not a specific strong arm.
Down here again, why would we not determine, to coin a phrase, kick this down the road to the new board, to the new next meeting, and include the new board members on this decision-making policy that they're gonna be part of?
We have board members sitting right here, that are not gonna be here, that have been a part of this process for many, many years, and I thought it would be good to hear their feedback and their experience, to know what their thoughts are on this.
That's what I was gonna ask, is where's the policy to pigeonhole this board?
Yeah.
Where's the policy to pigeonhole this board?
There wasn't, well, there was, but it wasn't followed.
But then that's bad, too, because then you get, you know, four trustees who aren't part of the process, this is why we put it in place, if you want to wait.
Wait a minute, let me comment in on that, before the new board changed in twenty, we had a process, all the reviews went out to every trustee, and every trustee evaluated the manager. Then, we got together and we discussed them, and we agreed upon goals, four or five, that we put into the manager's review, we also discussed compensation, agreed on that, and then had the meeting with the. We also discussed compensation, agreed on that, and then had the meeting with the, with the manager. You got elected in November and the reviews were due, we did Jade, Jade's in October. So the only year we, we, we short cutted it, so to speak, because. None of you were on the board except Thomas who and I, um, and John was that year. So we, we had an anomaly, we did it one way, one year, but previous years, we always did it the other way.
I was told by trustees that they hadn't done it before and they were excited to be able to participate in it.
What trustees told you that?
Sue Shipley.
We always were in it.
We were all in the Senate. And you, Ken's here, he was.
Ken was on the personal finance and so was Mr. Bean. You know what? It's great, it's not what I heard, but we can wait till the next board, that's fine too.
I, 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 I'm, I'm comfortable that I, I trust, it is a policy. I agree with your, I wanted to get discussion out there, I agree it is. Uh, there's nothing that prevents board members from going to the committee and saying, by the way, here are some goals that I thought of. Please add these to your list, there's nothing to prevent that, I was just trying to maybe kind of solidify it in writing, maybe you see, you see that as too much detail. Uh, I, I'm comfortable with the policy, I think it's well-written, I think it's fine, I, I, I'm willing to make motion to adopt the township manager evaluation policy. As it is, I just wanted to have a good discussion on it.
I want to second it and make comment, I think Grace nailed it when she said. The board needs to stay in their lane, but they can choose their lane. It's, it should be somewhat fluid and not pigeonholed, so.
Poor guy's literally got seven bosses, like.
Well, can I make a comment?
Oh yeah, sorry Jade, what are your thoughts?
This isn't, this isn't, this isn't Jade's evaluation policy, this is the manager evaluation policy. So this should live on for many years after I'm gone. You're not quitting, are you? So in bullet point number two, I just wanted to draw attention because I think this can actually help alleviate some of the, the discussion is. Under, um, number two, bullet point number two, it actually talks about a timeline. And that that will be communicated in an email when everything is sent out to the trustees. So I think that that timeline can take care of itself, um, with bullet point number two. And then in regards to timing, um, just from my own recent experience. Maybe like, uh, the review will be done sixty days with, within sixty days of the anniversary date. Of the, of the employment, because that's going to change depending on who the manager is, it's not going to follow the same. Um, pay process that maybe the, the staff does, so. Because you had mentioned timing, that would just be a suggestion that I may.
I do think this needs to have a timing section to it because otherwise it could sit. Somebody was hired in January, it could sit for a long time.
Those are just my, those are my comments.
Are you okay with the rest of it? Or as stated, okay.
Yes, at least memorializes process.
So did we have the motion by trustee McDonald, supported by clerk Slater, to, um. To adopt the township manager evaluation policy as, as presented.
Sorry, can we add something though to amend it to state something about the process will take place within sixty days of.
Whatever you guys decide.
Of their anniversary date.
Sure, so we amended, uh, do you want that to be under number two?
Um, somewhere up at the top.
Jade, should that be in number two, the evaluation preparation or?
That, yes, you could do within, yeah, under distribution or.
Or even just up at the top when it talks, just the summary piece when it talks about.
If you guys want to just make the motion to add a timing component to add sixty days, I can work with Katie and we can make it appropriate where it should go within the policy.
I'm good with that.
The other thing it doesn't have though, and Wendy said we should have one or the other week or three days. It doesn't state anywhere in there when the trustees are going to get the, uh. Um, consolidated performance review to look at.
That's what Jade just discussed, he said that the timeline of everything is put in here under number two. That, um, the communication sent for the evaluations will include a timeline. So I think that that piece of that.
For completing evaluations.
Out guardrails versus specifics, this gives us guardrails that we need to make a time.
So the trustees will have it beforehand.
Um, they get to choose, uh, yeah, they will, they will set a timeline. Which includes when completed forms will be remitted to before the evaluation, so yes. We're just not going to set how much, what that timeline is. So.
I think that's the one part that as you read a human resources director will manage the process. Of getting, making sure that we hit the timelines and setting that communication out. And then the rest of it is all up to the board.
Um, so what's the amendment, adding a sixty day window?
To the anniversary date of when the manager was hired that, that process.
Okay. That's the motion by trustee McDonald, supported by clerk Slater, to adopt the policy as stated with one addition of, um. The sixty day language. All in favor? Opposed, motion carried. Last item new business, zero eight seven, twenty twenty-four, resolutions to honor trustees Kessel and McDonald. Clerk Slater has prepared, um, the resolutions, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. So I put the item in the agenda, but I did not put the resolutions in the packet because I wanted to leave some element of surprise. Um, I'm going to read the resolutions at this time, um, trustees McDonald and Castle, both members of the Cascade community. And served on a variety of boards, commissions and committees for an extensive period of time. Their knowledge of Cascade's history will not be easily replaced. We would like to thank them for their hard work, dedication and service to the community, they have inspired the next generation of leaders. First, I'll read the resolution honoring the service of township trustee Tom McDonald. Whereas Tom McDonald was appointed as a trustee of Cascade Township Board of Trustees on January twenty-two, two thousand fourteen. And trustee McDonald was subsequently elected as a trustee by the residents of Cascade in two thousand fourteen, two thousand sixteen and two thousand twenty. And whereas trustee McDonald has dedicated over thirty years of his life to service of Cascade Township. Including membership on the perks committee in the nineteen nineties, serving on the open space committee from two thousand five through two thousand, two thousand nine. Appointment to the planning commission from two thousand five through two thousand fourteen with two years as chair. Serving on the election commission from two thousand sixteen to two thousand twenty-four. Approximately seven years of membership on the zoning board of appeals, including two years as chair. And several years of service on the downtown development authority. And whereas trustee McDonald has announced his retirement from the position of township trustee. Therefore be it hereby resolved, the Cascade Charter Township Board hereby expresses its heartfelt gratitude to trustee McDonald. For his selfless and outstanding service to the Cascade Charter Township community. And with that, I make a motion to approve this resolution.
Support. Motion by. It's a motion by clerk Slater, supported by supervisor Lesbrun, sorry supervisor Lesbrun, to approve the resolution, um. Recognizing Tom McDonald's service, all in favor? You don't have to do a roll call for an honorary resolution. I'm so sorry, motion carried.
Second resolution I'm going to read is for trustee Jim Kessel. Whereas Jim Kessel was elected as a trustee of the Cascade Township Board of Trustees on November two, two thousand four. Trustee Kessel was subsequently elected as a trustee by the residents of Cascade in two thousand eight, two thousand twelve, two thousand sixteen and two thousand twenty. And whereas trustee Kessel has dedicated over thirty-four years of his life to service of Cascade Township. Including twelve years of membership on the planning commission, beginning in nineteen eighty-nine, three years on the zoning board of appeals, beginning in nineteen ninety-five. And has served since two thousand sixteen on the election commission, might be longer, not sure. And then whereas trustee Kessel has announced his retirement from the position of township trustee. Now therefore be it hereby resolved, the Cascade Charter Township Board hereby expresses its heartfelt gratitude to trustee Kessel. For selfless and outstanding service to the Cascade Charter Township community. And again, I make a motion to, uh.
Shipley supports your motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was, okay, yeah, sorry Sue, that's totally my fault. Um, that's a motion by clerk Slater, supported by trustee Shipley, to approve the resolution honoring, um, trustee Kessel, all in favor? Motion here. Article eleven, public comments.
Hello, uh, my name is Deidre Deering, I'm at sixty twelve Burton Street Southeast. And Jim, I just wanted to say thank you for your years of service, thirty-five years is an amazing amount of time to spend anywhere. Let alone in one, in one space, so thank you very much for everything you've done for the township and the fact that. For so many years, leadership in the township and the residents, um, called you back time and time again to serve speaks volumes. So, thank you. And, and Tom, thank you as well, you know, your service has not gone unnoticed and you both have been great leaders, so thank you very much.
Good evening to everyone, Jeff Dion, Cascade. I came here and I was going to bring up something from the election four years ago where there was a failure to register a committee. And by some of the members and, and it really rubbed me wrong, but sitting here tonight. And I think Jim and Tom, both you were involved with that. But sitting here tonight, I'm, I'm not going to go into that, what I am going to say is that. Thank you for your service to Cascade, I, I think you've committed a lot of your time. Um, and a lot of effort and, and from somebody that is active in the community as well. And I ran for the, for the, the board and, um, I, I think that dedication that you've shown your community is to be appreciated. So thank you so much. I've been here for some of your decisions I didn't agree on, some of them I thank you and agreed on them and, and that's politics. But, but at the end of the day, I think we all go home knowing that you guys have, have worked hard here in Cascade and, and thank you for that. We appreciate you, thank you.
I'm Cindy James, it seems strange to be on this side of the microphone. Um, I live at, uh, ten seventy-one Honey Creek in Ada, used to be the planning commission with Jim Kessel. Back many years ago and subsequently was a township trustee. And I just wanted to say thank you for everything that you've done over the years, um, you've been a great role model. Done wonderful things for the community and all of you, thank you for your service, but good job.
I see here I have three minutes, but I'm a politician, so that goes to six, correct? No, seriously, Jim, uh, sixteen years ago, that's when I first met you. And that was when I was running for the state house and you introduced me to Cascade Township. And, uh, was one of my highlight townships in my district. Always enjoyed your meetings, they're very professional, not all of them are, that I had to sit through. And always enjoyed Cascade Township's board meetings, but two years after that, they took Cascade away from me. That was a real disappointment, called the census and redistricting. So, but, uh, I just want to thank you, Jim, for all you've offered in my life over the years. And Tom, I don't know you personally, but you, you've run a good township. And from the outside looking in, uh, very impressed with Cascade, always was. And by the way, my address is thirty-eight twenty-one Hunter Street, that's Gaines Township. Thank you.
Hello Township Board, I'm Lulu Brown, everybody who's here, I'm the library manager. Um, so yesterday we had our annual in-service, which is a staff training day. And part of our in-service was to prep a small present for the current board, because this is the last time that all of you will be here, um, together. It's okay if you don't want it, so no, no poor thing of anyone. Um, but it's just a let it snow mug, um, I spent the weekend baking cookies with, um, my assistant. So we've got a little handmade cookies, some hot cocoa, some little cute items just for all of you to say thank you. For the last two years that I've been in this position, um, I've learned so much. I've earned a really deep respect of the hard work that you guys do daily to balance the priorities of what residents want and what they need. Um, so, thank you. And thank you to Lulu, trustee McDonald and trustee Kessel for all of your service, I'll leave them on the table.
Hey, your library village passed, our library.
I thought that was like a celebration.
Scott Rissy, seventy-two thirty-eight Cascade Road, uh, I just wanted to say about. Gosh, it must have been close to twenty-five years ago, uh, I was a little younger, thought I was probably just wise. And, uh, I was dealing with, uh, I was leading the river association at the time on some boat ramp issues. And I think I spent quite a bit of time with you guys in meetings navigating that process. I remember going downtown and, and, uh, sitting at the table with you, Jim. And there was another individual there who, uh, I would say at the time was a little wiser than me. And he was pretty good at testing, uh, the conversation. And you guys really always worked well to try to circle things back to where they need to be. And, uh. Over time, I obviously mentored me and encouraged me to, uh, to run for a position on the board. And, uh, and so I wanted to say thank you for that, um, it's been a good run. I don't know that I have, you know, especially after sitting here tonight, I don't know that I want to do this for thirty-five years, but, uh. But I, but I am, uh, I am excited to, uh, to take over and, and thank you for your service.
Thanks, congratulations Scott.
Is there anyone virtually? Okay, what, we'll just do it after.
Need my timer for this one.
You bet, three minutes, uh, the heck with that. Rob Dan, thirty-one forty-eight Thornapple River Drive. I've had the pleasure with serving both of these gentlemen for many years. Tom, I met you, I think, at the first time at the, uh, Five Corners Open Space Group. Where we started planning about open space in the mid nineties, so we were trying to get a, a grip on that with all the communities. Jim, I met you on the basketball bench in seventh grade, I think, and we played basketball throughout high school. You know, so it's been a long, uh, friendship that we've had. You know, I totaled up the time and it's probably about seventy plus years that you two have been active in Cascade politics. And serving the community, so I'd like to congratulate Carly and Dawn on getting their spouses back, so. I know the, the amount of time and the dedic- dedication it, it takes. But for everything that you have done, I'd like to publicly thank you for everything that you have done for the community and the surrounding communities. You've attended so many meetings, rarely missed a meeting, and you've done it with integrity. And knowledge and have brought the township to a greater level that is hard to believe. And I really appreciate that and especially appreciate the way that you've handled yourselves these last four years. So congratulations on your retirement and thank you on behalf of myself and the rest of the community, thank you.
Any other public comments? Manager comments?
Yeah, I just have a couple, um, I won't go too long, but I just want to congratulate trustee Nordhook and Shipley on their reelections last night. Um, it's been fun working with you, look forward to working with you some more. And then to our new trustees, uh, trustee, uh, like Rissy is in the back and then Chris Nordike, looking forward to working with them. And then I just want to say thanks to trustee McDonald and trustee Kessel. Um, you've made my, um, transition easier in this last year and I just want to say thank you for all the support that you've given me and, uh, your years of service. That's all I have tonight.
More comments?
Always, stand up and thank you folks for being here tonight. And Rob, it's nice seeing you again tonight and, uh. Jim has always been my go-to guy when I've asked advice on the financial stuff that the board had to consider. And he's always been right there, his knowledge and his expertise hasn't failed. Tom, I appreciate all of the guidance that you've given. Tom, I appreciate all the guidance that you've given us on the changing community, the growing community, growing township that we all. Embrace and at the same time kind of step back and say, where the heck are we going? I invite Jim and Tom to join us during board meetings out there, just like what Rob did and Ken Pierce, our former treasurer. And still be part of the decision-making process. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
I also want to say thank you to the two of you. Good example to me and have taught me a lot and I'm going to miss you.
Going to miss you too. I don't want to stand up, John, you know, but. Thank you all for coming and and offering your thanks. I it really hasn't been a job. Years ago, Jack Lewis got together and I was really young then because thirty five years ago was quite a while. And I I had a earth berm house being built in my neighborhood. And I was president of my neighborhood association. All the neighbors were complaining to me that this house didn't meet. The ordinance and so they wanted me to come down to the township and complain. Well, I'd never been before and I made a comment about that and Jack was on the board then. And he said, maybe you'd like to get involved. And I said, well, I may, you know, maybe I just would, you know, kind of smart. And the next thing I know, I got appointed to the planning commission. And that's when it all started and Jack. Rest his soul is not with us anymore, but he was a great mentor to me for for many years and Cindy and Rob, Ken. I I mean, it's, it was a pleasure serving with all of you and others like Fred Goldberg, who isn't here, but. There was many fine board members over the years that gave a lot to the township, not just Tom and I, but. I want to thank them too for their years of service and Ken, our friendship goes back a long ways and. I I enjoyed working for you and I enjoyed you being here when you were our rep and keeping us and informed of what was going on in state government. Because we haven't always had that. And when Lisa took your place and and had the district, Lisa was really good at coming here too and. Keeping us informed of what was going on at state level and asking for input. And I know I called you a few times and you helped the township. Do something that we were looking to do. So, and Ken, you know, I know this was hard. For you to get here. You've gone through an awful lot, buddy, and I appreciate so much the years that we got to serve together and I. And I hope we did a lot of good. And Deidra, thank you very much for your remarks. I appreciate them very much and your years of serving on the planning commission and Scott. I look forward to you serving as a trustee and as well as as well as Chris and to John and Jimmy, congratulations on your reelections and to the rest of you. I wish you all the best in the years to come. And I want to thank Cascade Township, you know, for continuing to let me serve. It's been an honor. And I'm going to miss it, but it's time.
That's, I guess it's my turn now, Jim, and I'll, I I won't be succinct, but I'll try to be. First, I have to thank my my loving wife for all her support the last forty years, especially the last twenty five. And thank the election officials, especially Sue and Jennifer and Jan and the whole team. At least alliance in the county. I mean, it's, it's been a tough. Job for you guys and I think it's one of the toughest in the in the job. And congratulations, Timmy, John, Grace, Wendy, Sue. Chris and Scott, I think we've got a great board. And what I wanted to say is that the township has made great decisions in the past. I think we're making great decisions now. And I'm confident we're going to make great decisions in the future. And why is that? It's because we have very. Dedicated, concerned and smart residents who really care. We can always know that, you know, that we can agree to disagree, can't please all the people all the time. But people really reach out and, you know, Dorothy's made made her contributions in the elections. People are concerned and care and I think that's why we've always made good decisions. And I think we're going to continue to make good decisions. So, during this process, I I've learned a lot. The last twenty five years and that's made me a better person. And I'm sure Jim would would agree that what we've learned has made us a much better person. And I'm thankful for those things and for the people. And I just want to mention a few things that I learned. That made me a better person. First, that cooperation and respect obviously beat contention and animosity, you know, civility is key and I think we've really tried to. Always be be that way and work that way. And I think back to twenty years ago this week. November ninth, two thousand four, we opened the new Camelback Bridge. For those of you who are been residents a long time. We had an original Camelback Bridge that was built in nineteen twenty nine. It was on the National Register of Historic Places. They're very specific to Michigan and Ontario. And we had a big problem and it kind of got out of hand. The road commission wanted to build a big bridge. And matter of fact, we found through a freedom of information request, put a four lane road, make Thornup River Drive a four lane, a four lane road, have a big bridge. So, the the road commission had one objective to move traffic, build a big bridge, build a big road. The resident said, we want to preserve the Camelback Bridge and we had over two hundred people. The news stations down at the road commission meetings and it was very contentious. And of course. The township had just passed in the nineties, the pathway millage. So, we wanted a path across. The the bridge across the river to go from Cascade to Ada and hook them together. So, we had three competing groups. And I had a group, we called called Friends of Thornapple River Drive and we. Kind of got a thousand signatures from registered voters of Kent County saying we want to preserve the bridge and we sent that to the federal highway administration. As well as the National Register of Historic Places. And the federal highway administration said they wouldn't. Provide money to the county to replace the bridge because it was on the National Register of Historic Places. So, we weren't on their Christmas card list, to say the least. But but you know, what we found is that we sat down and and I sat on that side and I didn't know what I didn't know. I didn't understand the workings of the county. I didn't understand the workings of the township and what was going on. And so, I really learned. Through this process, a couple of people and I sat down with John Rice down at the road commission. And we said, look, we have three competing goals. So, what we decided was, hey, why don't we build a new Camelback Bridge? Why don't we just widen Thornup River Drive, keep it reasonable and provide the linkage across. So, we had the pathway continued and low and behold, that worked and and we have a new Camelback Bridge today, not the National Register of Historic Places. But we have a decent sized Thornup River Drive and it all worked out well. So, I, you know, I think that we, I learned a lot from. Mike Julian, the township manager who who said, hey, you know, we've really got to come together on this and. And and we did. And I thought that how we handled that was was very well done. The second I I'd learned is diversity of opinions. And teammates really produces better results. You know, we don't always agree to agree, but I look at a few projects. I look at Mike Julian. When we, twenty years ago, this Saturday, November ninth, two thousand four, we had the bridge cutting or the ribbon cutting ceremony to open the Camelback Bridge. John Rice of the road commission contacted me that morning and said, Tom, would you come and speak at the ribbon cutting ceremony? I said, huh? I said, John, we had all these arguments for the last two years. I thought you hated me. And he goes. You know, this project became a better project because of the residents and because of, you know, your involvement. What much to my surprise, two weeks later, Mike Julian called me and said, hey, Tom, would you be on the planning commission? I said, Mike, I mean, I thought you kind of wouldn't like me after all these years of arguing. And he said, no, I think you, you, we did a good job. We can agree to disagree. But we had a a lot of people with diverse opinions and teammates. John Rice, Mike Julian, but then the home mayor fund started. So, to start the open space policy in the open space committee. Sarah and Charlie Holmeyer offered five hundred thousand dollars to the township for open space and asked the township to match it. So, thanks to Rob Behan and thanks to Tom Rooks and thanks to John Barpus who got involved and a group of citizens. And we started an open space policy and Rob Bejima, a professor at Aquinas College. Did a natural features inventory of the property that became Peace Park. And we started this process of. How could we grow open space in Cascade Township? And eventually, to make a long story short, we tried to get a hundred and ninety eight acres, which we got, which became Peace Park. Which we would have never got without the team that we had, the land conservancy, the national, national conservancy. The land conservancy of West Michigan, but Rob knew the Faze family and he dealt with them. A Jim and. Mike Julian said, why don't we bring this up to the residents? Well, a group called Neighbors for Serenity got involved and said, hey, if we're going to buy that property. Out at the Faze property, which is now Peace Park, why don't we buy this property around Burton Park? There's a hundred and ten homes that are going to go in here. And so, they partnered with us and we put a millage out to the people in two thousand eight for open space. And so, we became. A a big hub for open space with three hundred acres between Peace Park and what is now Burton Park. But again, that diversity of opinions and the people. I like to thank those neighbors for serenity, friends of Thornup River Drive, John Barpus, Charlie and Sarah Holmeyer, Rob Behan. Jim, Mike Julian, everybody who was involved in that. I'm sure I'm leaving a few out. The third thing I said is, I thought about is. How to learn from those with experience. A lot of the people I I mentioned prior, that include Jack Lewis, who taught me a lot about precedent setting and how important that is. Sue, Jim and Jennifer about elections. You know, there's old saying, God gave us two ears and one mouth. And there's a reason for that. And I've learned from these people with experience, including Jim. Who really with with Ken Pierce drove, how do we fix our unfunded pension liability? That was a huge thing to do that had been kicked down the road for twenty years. That was a big. Liability for the township and it was going to kind of financially strap us over time. And they stood up to it and said, how do we do away with this? And we addressed the problem. So, you know, I learned a lot from those with experience. Fourth thing I want to mention is residents do make a difference, listening to you and taking in your ideas. Grace did a good job of. Driving a master plan, getting a lot of resident input. So, residents make a difference and they had so much input into that master plan. And of course, the fifth thing, which is also very important is vision is important. Having a vision for the future. I think back at Tassel Park in the nineteen eighties and nineteen nineties. When the township was working with nine residents to buy their homes and getting the first right of refusal, people are saying, you're nuts. Why are you buying those properties? Why would you want to buy those properties? Well, they're Tassel Park today. Because those people in the eighties and nineties who were on the board, Cindy, probably and others, had a vision for a Riverside Park for the residents. And so, Tassel Park started in the eighties, the pathway system started in the nineties because we didn't have pathways when I first moved to Cascade nineteen eighty five. First, open space policy. Again, it came because some people had a vision for open space, thanks to Charlie and Sarah Holmeyer and the board at that time, which I wasn't on. The new master plan that Grace and others drove, that's got a vision for the future. And I think it's great seeing that vision is important and that we extend that out to the residents and involve the residents in that vision. The toughy muffler, we negotiated with that in twenty fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, pushing. Why do you want to buy that? It's to make it what it's going to become. And I think this next board is really going to drive that project to expand Tassel Park and really make it extra special because. Toughy muffler, although it was a great business, was always eyesore. People complained about it for forty years, as long as I've lived here. And that's not going to happen anymore. There's going to be a a whole new vision for that property. And so, lastly, I just want to say that decisions are made for good reasons at specific points in time. There are decisions I probably made ten years ago that I probably wouldn't make today, given the factors today versus the factors and conditions back then. In twenty thirty, twenty thirty four, people are going to look back and say, why did, why did you make that decision in twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four? That board was crazy. Well, if they didn't understand the history and the conditions and the dynamics of the time, they wouldn't understand why those decisions were made. So. I think we've, we've made a lot of good decisions in the past. I think we're making them now and we'll make them in the future. And I just have so many people to thank. That have made me a better person and and I just want to thank the community, especially, like I said, my my wife and and others. And this board, because I learned a lot from this board the last four years and they've been a really, really good board. So, I'm very, very, feel very good about the future and. Thank you for that long-winded soliloquy.
Yeah, I have something.
Sure.
I'm enjoying, I'm with Cascade, who's been a resident here for thousands of years. I came to a few meetings in the last several years and I would share all of you. I'm grateful that you have intelligence and you give it your time and take care of us. And Tom McDonald had used to work one day. And that's why I'm here tonight. We've been trying to connect on the phone, but we haven't yet. But my word to him was, is he said. It's your civic duty. Civics, civics. It's a high school class. And when I was in high school, I didn't have civics or I didn't pay attention to civics. So, since then, whenever you said it, if you remember, I've been studying civics. And there's lots of good programs on PBS. There's lots of information out there and I'm finding it and I'm doing it. I didn't know I was doing a civic duty helping with the cart. I didn't know I was doing a civic duty when I helped start the history group and all the events of the history in Cascade. So, I I put forth the effort. It's hard to see it. And I, I'm older and miser. I put forth the effort because of dear friend Julie Johnson called me tonight and said he was going to be here and they were going to be here and you're going to be here and you're going to be here. And I've been trying to contact you by phone to say, you use the word civics. So, to express civic duties. And I've been practicing that and Suzie helped me with that too. So, I did put forth the effort to you guys and thank you for your effort and taking and helping, taking care of those civic duty and our civic role. So, thank you.
Well said, Joy.
And I did try to call you again today, but nobody was home. I did try to call you again today and nobody answered. Okay.
So, Jim, I noticed that thirty five year mark and boy, I'll tell you what, I've looked at the color of my hair and that's just not in the cards for me. Thank you for all your years of service.
Thank you.
Thanks for your years of service too, town.
Motion?
Look to adjourn. Support.
Motion by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Shipley to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.